Good afternoon, or good evening rather. Welcome to the Board of Commissioners meeting for August 23rd, 2016. We're glad you're with us today. We are going to start our meeting with the invocation. David Holmes from First Church of Christ Ascitus in Soul Mill Grove will lead our invocation. We're glad you're with us today. And it'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance that will be led by Scout Troop 955 from East Cobb Christian Ridge, or Chestnut Ridge Christian Church. So if you'd come forward and present the invocation. And gentlemen, from Troop 955, if you'd come up please.
Ms. Debbie Haber, Christian Church.
Yes, sir. They don't know. Scotts, when he has finished with the invocation, if you guys would lead the pledge, we would appreciate it, okay?
Thank you Commissioner Lee, Board of Commissioners, Neighbors and Friends, Cobb County. Tonight's invocation centers on one of the eight Beatitudes Jesus gave us in Matthew 5. Blessed are the peacemakers, for they shall be called the children of God. So what is a peacemaker? A peacemaker is someone that brings healing to a situation, large or small, it doesn't matter, because healing is healing. That's not very pleasant. One quick example, my wife was taking my daughter to Kennesaw College for a class. She needed a ride last week. They're going to Chick-fil-A, someone cut in front of them right at the sign we order. And it was kind of a rude thing. My daughter was infuriated. She wanted my wife to honk at this person, or gesture rudely. But my wife says, "I'm a peacemaker, not a peacebreaker." And so the guy went on, got his breakfast, and they pulled up, and lo and behold, he paid for their breakfast. Not reacting to bad behavior. Now, there's a serious one in the history of Cobb County, which I think you might find interesting. It was June of 1864, five miles west of here. Abraham Lincoln was facing a possible loss of the presidency in the election of 1864 November. General Sherman knew that. He was desperate to break the Confederate line. He was flanked by General Joe Johnston all the way down from Chickamauga. It all ended up at a seven-mile line from Big Kennesaw to Cheatham Hill. But the main force of the attack was at dead angle. You'll see a monument there, the fishhook shape of Confederate defenders at Cheatham Hill. Now, General Sherman and a relative of mine, Dan McCook, who led the charge up the hill, he wasn't the peacemaker I'm about to talk about. The Cooks love to fight. They always have. We don't really talk about them much. But anyway, it was a suicide mission. He knew he was sending his friend to die. McCook and other Union officers advanced forward after massive cannon fire from the Federals. It started a wildfire, and row and row upon Union soldiers were mowed down by the Confederate defenders. Shortly after the battle, half hour, a little-known Colonel from Arkansas, from the First Infantry Arkansas, W.H. Martin, he saw the Union soldiers lying on the field and the wildfire approaching, about to consume them. And he got up on the parapet, waved a ramrod with a handkerchief, and called a truce. This has never been done in such an intense warfare, and especially a big battle like at Cheatham Hill. It's never been done. He yelled out, "Get your men out of there. We'll hold our fire. Make it quick." And so countless lives were pulled away from the wildfire, the brush fire, and they went after that. The battle continued. And two days later, another truce was called, where Confederate and Union met together for a couple hours and became Americans again. As just, you know, they sat, had coffee, they smoked, and told stories. Then the battle began. After the fifth or sixth day, they found that Joe Johnston pulled his men out, and Sherman went on to take Atlanta. Lincoln won the election because of that. A little point in history too, his opponent, G.W. McClellan, was going to sue for peace for the Confederacy, which means we would have had two countries today. And Lincoln wasn't about to let that happen. So, from an act of kindness and compassion, something great comes out of it. It doesn't have to be a... The thing about love and compassion, it's not a quantitative action, a small one or a big one. So a peacemaker is someone that does something small or big, but is still a peacemaker. And I'll close with a scripture. Let's first have a silent prayer. And let's remember our first responders here, and our troops overseas, our sons and daughters Jesus said, "Peace I leave with you; my peace I give unto you. Not as the world giveth, give I unto you. Let not your heart be troubled; neither let it be afraid." Amen.
Thank you.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Thank you to the boys from Scout Troop 955. As Commissioner Ott mentioned, you be ready, we may be calling on you. We'll now call the meeting to order. Earlier this afternoon, our work session, we went through tabs 1, 2, and 3. That material, for your consideration, will be on our website in the next day or two. I want to apologize to Commissioner Ott. He had asked me to publicly indicate that he had to leave the work session early for a predetermined meeting from visitors who were out of town. And I was supposed to communicate that, and I didn't, and I forgot. So I apologize to you. But those three tabs will be on the video for... I guess they don't do video anymore, do you, Sherri? The important part of that is two components for the folks that are... First is tab 2, which is the Pay in Class study presentation was made for those folks that were interested in that. But the 2017 budget was presented as well, with a conversation regarding surrounding that. That was presented as well. We hope to vote on that and adopt a budget the night meeting is in September. So if you're interested in that budget, we ask you to please go back and look at that presentation. That takes us to tab 4, Presentations. There's three. The first is Commissioner Cupid, and it's to recognize McKeechern High School Girls' Track Team. Ladies, would you come forward? Is McKeechern...
Great.
Take your time.
Good evening.
You must have moved faster than that.
You guys can feel free to line up here. All right, we'll take who we have. Good evening, ladies. How are you? Good. Thanks for coming out here tonight. Good evening, all of you. I'm Commissioner Cupid, and I have the honor of recognizing the state champions of track and field for women who are in high school here in Georgia. And that's none other than McKeechern High School's track team. Now, we may not be in Rio, but we have reason to celebrate your accomplishments. And for any of us who didn't watch the Olympics, know about just the level of commitment that it takes to be able to compete in the sport, and certainly the level of discipline. And I'm appreciative of all that you guys have done to represent Cobb County well, and appreciate you, Coach, for your effort in training these young women in their efforts. I would like to read a certificate I have for the coach. There are a couple of coaches. Coach, what's your name?
Yeah, Coach Hoskins.
Coach Hoskins, thanks for being here tonight, Coach Hoskins. First here in the list of certificates. I want to thank you for successfully serving as head coach of the girls' track team and leading them to the Class 6A Track and Field State Championship. Under your guidance, the Lady Indians won the 200 meters, 400 meters, and 4x400 relay. Sounds like somebody who also got some medals in the Rio Olympics. What's her name, Allison? Yes, didn't she compete in those same... Felix? Yes. And placed in several other races. We thank you for making a difference in your players' lives, elevating their skills, and improving our community through leadership. On behalf of the Board of Commissioners, we thank you. And I have certificates for you ladies for your efforts blazing up the track here in Cobb County and the state. I'm going to read the first certificate, and then just hand out the other certificates and read your names. All of them say the same thing. Again, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners congratulates you and all the women of the McKeechern High School Girls' Track Team on winning the Class 6A Track and Field State Championship. The Lady Indians won again the 200 meters, 400 meters, 4x100, and 4x400, and placed in several other races. Your contribution to the team helped clinch the title, and we are proud of the way that you represented McKeechern and Cobb County. We wish you the best as you continue your academic and athletic career. And this first certificate goes to Ms. Mackenzie Dunmore. Are you here? She's not here? Okay. Okay, she's already in college, okay? Mom, are you here tonight representing your daughter? Okay. Thank you, Mom.
Thank you.
Okay, she's in running country for here in the U.S. She's in Eugene, Oregon, training. I'm not trying to exclude any other parent that wants to be here with their child. I'm sorry, this is for Ms. Florence. I don't want to mispronounce your name. Elijah? Elijah, she's not here tonight? Okay. Okay, can we try Ms. Evans? Shanaya? Shanaya? Thank you for all your efforts, Shanaya. What do you run?
I do the one, the two, and the relay events.
Okay, do we have Zaria Lee here tonight? No? Okay, that's okay. How about Jasmine Reese? Jasmine, thank you for your efforts on the track team. And tell us what you run?
100, 200, and the relays.
All right, very good. Another fast sprinter here tonight. Next, I have Tameya, or Tamaya Roberts. Okay. Pronounce your name properly.
It's Tamaya.
Tamaya, and tell us what you run, Tamaya.
The 400, 200, and the relays.
All right. You just put out a spin. Okay, is Alana here? Alana, thank you for your contribution to the team. And if you could let us know what you do on the track?
The 800 and the 4x400 meter relay.
All right, wonderful. Thank you for your representation. And Victoria, are you here tonight? Thank you, Victoria, for all your hard work. Tell us what you run?
I do the long jump and triple jump.
Long jump and triple jump? Good job. All right, and I have some other certificates, because I see I'm missing Royce. Royce, while I'm thumbing through this, why don't you tell us what you run?
I do triple jump.
Triple jump, very good. Thank you, Ms. Royce. Well, coaches, while I'm looking through this for her certificate, can you talk a little bit about your track team, and anything else you want to share?
Yes, the girls did an amazing job this year. We got a lot of the field event points, which got us going with the prelims. We got majority of our athletes qualified for the finals, and they just showed out on the track. They did a great job. Congratulations, girls.
We're going to take a picture of the athletes. If there are any parents here tonight who do want to be pictured with your children, I'd invite you up at this time, else we're going to take... We already have one parent here, so you don't have to leave her by herself. Know that you've sowed in a lot of hard work for they to accomplish what they've done. Oh, you look good, Mom. You look good. Okay, very good. We may have little brother out here. Come on, little brother. Very good. Can you get us all in, Sherri, or do we need to come? Okay, we're going to have to have some people come in the front. Come on. Come on. There you go. Just, you can go right in here. There you go.
Okay. Can we get on over here?
There we go. Don't hide, don't hide. You can come here and represent. Thank you. Appreciate you coming out tonight.
The second agenda item is to present certificates of recognition to the Cobb County Police Explorers. Commissioner Weatherford, the explorers and their leadership would come up, please.
Thank you. Would the explorers come on up? While they're there, it's a little-known fact, I was a track and field star myself. I came in second in the 10-yard dash, and first in the 3-yard ditch jump. Tonight, we're going to honor this fine group of explorers from Cobb County Police, and Officer Andy Higgins, who is the liaison. And I want to read this, and I'm going to let you guys introduce yourselves and talk about what they did. But the Cobb County Police Explorers competed in the 12th Annual Georgia Law Enforcement Explorers State Championship in June 23rd, 26. There were 200 explorers from all over the state in the competition, and they won their eighth straight state championship. Isn't that great? They took home trophies in the following events. First place overall in the championship. First place domestic dispute. First place drill and ceremony. First place DUI. First place traffic stop. First place uniform inspection, as you might can tell, pretty sharp. First place unknown trouble. What's that? They don't know. Still unknown? You didn't find it? Okay.
They can tell you, but they'd have to shoot you.
Well, that brings up the next one, second place active shooters. You must have took care of that. Second place in traffic stop again. Second place in unknown trouble. Third place, critical incident. Third place, domestic dispute. They also attended the National Law Enforcement Competition in Flagstaff, Arizona, the week of July 10th. There were over 4,000 explorers there, and the Cobb County Police Explorers won fifth place in traffic stops. They had over 100 teams competing. Also, at this year's national conference, our very own Sergeant Leah Barton was elected as the vice national youth representative, and will be traveling around the country talking about law enforcement exploring and the Cobb County Police Explorers. That's pretty great. Leah was served in this position from 2016 to 2018. She is the first from Georgia to win this title since the start of the competition in Explorers in 1973. So congratulations, great job. Officer Higgins, why don't you tell us a little bit more? And if you would, let me read one certificate and then hand it out to them.
I'm Officer Andy Higgins. I'm the post advisor for Post 5 for Cobb County. Pretty much, he summed up, the Explorers did over 3,000 community service hours last year, and we're close to that already this year, and we still have a couple more months to go. They put in a lot of hard work and dedication. We're very proud of them. And some of these will soon be joining the Cobb County Police Force as police officers and putting their training to use on the road. We're very proud of all that they have done, and all the commitment and dedication and hard work that they do every week, every month, and every year for the Police Explorers. Very proud of how they acted in state, taking their eighth championship, and then going to Flagstaff and taking fifth place in the traffic stop. And one thing that was more important than any of that, that made us feel better than winning any awards, is everywhere they went, they got complimented on how well behaved they are, respectful to everybody. So that means more than any trophies we could get. So I'm very proud of these kids. Some of the team members couldn't be here tonight because of college and other engagements going on, but we're very proud of all of them. This is our female advisor. She's also the PIO for the Cobb County Police Department, Officer Alicia Chilton. Chief Oscar Escarsega, he's been running our program now for about, what, four years? He is the first, he'll be the next one that ages out here in the next year, and we hoping to get him on in the police force. Of course, we've already introduced Leah Barton. She goes to Harrison High School, and she's also dual enrollment in college right now. Sergeant Mallory Guy. And we have Corporal Shemel Callender and Corporal Jovan McShay.
We have certificates for everyone, but I have a lot more than here, so what I might do is just let you pass out later, if that's okay with you guys. And we appreciate all you've done for Cobb, and we look forward to nine years of championships next year, all right? Congratulations.
Congratulations, folks. The next presentation, number three, is to present the results. The Cobb Community Impact Grants from the Cobb Community Foundations. My understanding is that Mayor Alleghood...
This is yours.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. County Manager, and County Staff, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. Want to take just a minute and introduce our board chair, Sherri Martin, who's here with us, as well as some of the Cobb County grant recipients that you're going to hear from in just a few minutes. It's a great honor to be here to share with you some results and some updates on the impact that this great, wonderful grant is having in our community. For those of you who do not know, there are 13 community foundations in the state of Georgia. We are one of those foundations, and we, because of our size and how much we give, are arguably the most giving community foundation in the state. And we are that because of the great partnerships that we have. The partnership that exists between Cobb County and the Cobb Community Foundation helps to make us that most giving community foundation. Last year, when we began 2015, we created the Cobb Community Impact Grant. It is a partnership between Cobb County and the Cobb Community Foundation. We created this with a mission to create new programs, or take existing programs that are in the nonprofit community, and to be able to expand those programs and create an impact and change the quality of life through impact in Cobb County. Working together, we created, our committee created an ability to reward nonprofits all throughout the county that had done an exceptional job in creating impact and improving the quality of life of Cobb citizens. We create a one-time award, a grant, between $5,000 and $10,000. Our grant committee makes a selection process. We choose the nonprofit. It is a reimbursement grant. A reimbursement grant in that we allow the nonprofit, we award the grant, then we allow the nonprofit to actually implement, and then we reimburse. That creates accountability, and we are able to create a very transparent process. Through this process, we wanted to inspire all the nonprofits to go out and to take the public money and to inspire private money, and we've been able to do that through matching grants. We've asked all of our nonprofits to go out and to actually inspire matching grants. They've done this very successfully. And then finally, what we're, part of what we're doing tonight, and part of what we'll do in the next 30 days, is come back and report to the Board of Commissioners and to hand over our documentation. We've hired Marietta Firm, Sudisay, a CPA firm, that helps and assists us in this documentation. In 2015, when we began our community impact grant award system, last year, we chose 29 nonprofits, and we rewarded them with $250,000. Those 29 nonprofits went out into the community and inspired and raised an additional $399,000 in matching grants. And they went to do that, they did that through accessing partnerships. Over 50 different matching partnerships last year provided an additional $400,000. The Cobb citizens were impacted. There were 103,280 Cobb citizens that were impacted last year. This year, we kicked off our Cobb Community Impact Grant for 2016. Many of you were there. Mr. Chairman, you were there. Commissioner Burrell was there. Commissioner Ott was there. And you saw, on that particular day, we had a room of about 400 people, many different folks that had come to find out who was going to be awarded. Well, we, on that particular day, awarded 32 impact grants to very deserving nonprofits in our community. Of the 32 impact grants, 17 of those 32 impact grants actually impact all four districts. So when you look at the amount of grants that are actually being implemented in the districts, you look at District 1, Mr. Weatherford, you've got 22 grants being implemented in your district. Mr. Ott, you have 22. Ms. Burrell, you have 21. And then Ms. Cupid, you have 23 different grants. So out of the 32 grants, we're actually implementing almost a fair, a very even distribution in all of the districts. You can see alphabetically the nonprofits here that actually received the grants, that are in the process. They are in the process right now of implementing the grants. Their documentation period comes up, they have to document by the end of September. And you can see alphabetically there they are. If they've got a 1, 2, 3, 4, that means that they have implemented in each, their grant implementation in each district. This year, we are investing $250,000 in the nonprofit community. We took in 68 applications. 32 nonprofits were selected. They have secured, and they have a commitment for $241,721 in matching grants, and they have impacted geographically and categorically every part of Cobb County. Those 32 Cobb Community Impact Grants are impacting 103,248 citizens. Here's a great example of Loving Arms Cancer Care Ministry, a ministry, a grant recipient that is impacting all, has impact in every single district. And we have tonight Shay Trailer, who is the founder and the executive director, and I'm going to let Shay come up and tell you exactly what kind of impact they're having here in Cobb County.
Good evening. Loving Arms Cancer Outreach was founded in 2011 by myself and another RN from the Cancer Center over here, right here at Kennesaw Hospital. We listened for years about the patients telling us how hard it was for them to pay for parking, for them to have gas for transportation, for them to even pay their electric bills. And so we started doing little fundraisers to raise money to help them, and through that, Loving Arms was born. With this impact grant that we received from Cobb County, we have already bought 100 patients' gas cards and grocery cards, and we've already dispersed them. So they have the money that's needed to get to their doctor's appointments. They have the food, the means to buy the food that they need while they're going through chemotherapy and other types of treatments. So I'd like to thank you guys for helping us to help the cancer patients right here in our community. And as Tommy said, we have been able to impact the whole county, and the response has been phenomenal. So thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shay. Once again, this is a quality of life implementation, and you guys are doing such a wonderful, wonderful job. Here's another great example. This is the Marietta Cobb Museum of Art. Once again, it is, there are recipients that are touching each district, making an impact in every district, and created a new program that is going to deliver art experiences to every part of Cobb County. And I'm going to ask Sally McCauley, who is the executive director, to come up and tell you exactly how she... you exactly how she's going to touch 3,600 families in our community.
Okay. Hey there. This is our education director, Allison Frank, and that is our new U-Haul truck that we have just purchased through the Cobb Community Impact Grant. Our mission at Marietta Cobb Museum of Art is to build community through art, and so that is the Color Wheels Mobile Art Experience. And we are going to go to all different schools in Cobb County, Title I schools, regular schools, and bring art to children that would not normally be able to do art. And we're going to have the art mobile stuffed with all kinds of supplies, that they can come do chalk art, they can paint, they can, we've, Allison has been hard at work creating a gate for safety reasons, and it is just going to be incredible. So we are going to do a classroom or gallery that's going to go to these different schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sally.
Thank you, Sally. That's how we're going to get to 3,600 families all throughout Cobb County. This is District One. This particular grant recipient is the Marietta Police Athletic League, and they are implementing right here in Marietta, an extraordinary program. This program is a program designed to prevent juvenile crime by building trust between young people and the police. It is an extraordinary program, and in a time that we live in right now, we all understand, everybody in this room understands how important trust is. We're so proud of this program and glad to be a part of this. The impact is 234 youth. This is District Two, right in the community. This is a great program, a program that is actually assist special needs adults in marketing shredding services that they had. Last year, in 2015, they received a grant and they bought shredding machines. It's been so successful this year, what they're doing is their grant this year was designed to market and to tell all the businesses in this, in their particular area, that they can come and bring their paper and have it shredded. You might see here our Board Chair, that's Sherri Martin up there. We just recently were on Atlanta Company, we were featured, and the Cobb Community Impact Grant, and we got to tell the story about what a wonderful, wonderful partnership we have with Cobb County, and what a great job we were doing implementing this particular shredding program. This impacts 20 special needs adults. Here's District Three, Elekatech. It is a program that adapts toys for special needs children, impacting 150 special needs children. And then finally, District Four, this is the Austell Community Task Force. They are doing an extraordinary job in South Cobb. This year, they've taken, expanded their program that is impacting youth and family engagement, impacting over 600 young people. And I'm so proud to have Deborah Johnson here with us tonight. Deborah is the vice chair for the Austell Community Task Force, and she's going to come forward and tell us briefly how she is doing such a great job down there with the young people.
Good evening, everyone. Austell Community Task Force has been doing the Back to School Jam for at least 15 years now. This year was the 15th Annual Back to School Jam, and we, because of Cobb County Impact Grant, we was able to serve an additional 600-plus families, sending them back to school with supplies needed for their educational growth. And we do thank Cobb County Impact and the Commissioners for the opportunity to receive the grant.
We gave out 32 grants. You've heard about testimonies from three of those grants. Just think about adding another 29 grants, the impact that, that's 103,000 people that the Cobb Community Impact Grant is impacting. Like to take just a minute, as we close, and let you hear from our Board Chair, Sherri Martin. And once again, from the bottom of my heart, thank you so much for making this possible to our nonprofit community.
Thank you, Tommy. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, we truly cannot thank you enough for allowing us to impact the community the way that these impact grants have. Last year, I had the opportunity to announce every single one of these impact grants. I could hardly get through it without crying. It is just amazing to see what these folks are doing. I am so humbled by what all of you are doing in this community, and it is such an honor to be able to help you in any way we can to do it. So thank you from the bottom of my heart, and I'm not going to get choked up. The hardest thing that those of us who served on the selection committee had to do was decide who was going to receive an award and who was not. It was heartbreaking, because there was not a single request that did not serve some need out there that absolutely warrants being helped. But we couldn't do them all. We did $250,000 worth this year and last year, and that turned into over $1.1 million in investments back in the community because of those matching grants. Over 206,000 people were impacted, and we thank you for allowing us to do that. We look forward to helping to continue to make a long-lasting impact on this community. Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. This will take us to Tab Five, our Centrus Park Monthly Update from County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and fellow board. It's getting really exciting, because I think the presentation, you will see tonight, that a lot of activity and a lot of finish work is moving to the inside, and has been demobilization of cranes. So it's getting exciting, because the time is drawing near. Let's go ahead with the first slide. Construction update, we've spent $365,505,89. Completed to date with 75.1% of this site completed. 1,100 workers currently work on the ball site, 265 workers on the mixu site, over 2.489 million man-hours through July, and no lost time injuries to date, which is remarkable on this particular site. We're going to give some area views. This is an area view, looking from the east park into the west. You also see the Comcast Building, which I will mention later, that's coming, but that is an area view there. More and more man-hours, as I stated, it's, they're moving indoors with the interior finishes underway. The lower concrete seating bowl is complete. Installation of stadium seating continues. Installation of the vertical circulation ramps, elevators, and escalators are ongoing. This is a view of the right field corner from inside the seating bowl, and it's a panoramic view from the bowl, from the right field. This photo was taken August the 17th of this year. This is a view of home plate, again, from the inside the bowl, looking around home plate, and the installation of lower bowl, concrete complete, and the cranes, as I mentioned, have been demobilized. There are no cranes on the inside of the stadium at this time. This is a view of left field corner, up to the third base line to left field, and this photo was taken the 17th as well of August. Home plate sunscreen nearly complete. Here as we look at that from the bowl. The home plate seating bowl is complete and with the power and data installed, and this section is to be equipped with enhanced data, Wi-Fi, video components on that as well. LED lighting is being installed on the canopy. That was taken August the 15th. So there's a lot there. This is the Delta Club. So you see cabinetry is being installed, and it gives you a feel that they are really moving to the inside with some of the interior finishes. This next is a bird eye view of home plate, area roofing and home plate sunscreen almost complete at present. We mentioned that earlier, but this gives you a bird eye view of that as well. The next slide show that the escalators are under construction and underway, with that completion as well is moving on. And they got handrails on the third base ramp. Handrails is what I'm showing there. They are underway on the ramps. This is an important part of the computer of this facility, the walk-in beer coolers to cheer your beverage of choice. So that's there underway. This is the affinity and the chop sign below the iconic A. So that's exciting there with that as well. This shows a, the next slide, the chop house taking shape. This two-story facility is more than twice the size of the original, and featured outdoor space with great views of the field. This one shows some of the glass windows are being installed on the Comcast building. So you can see that it's really taking shape and moving along as well, which is right adjacent to. Steel being erected, complete for the Roxy Theater, and that steel structure is in place. So now they can start doing that. Some of the hardscapes, and looking at sidewalks and the mobility around, but they are, that work has begun on some of the hardscape around the exterior of the stadium as well. The next one shows the Plaza entrance there on that one, which is. We got a total work to date, as of June 27, 2016, $405,810,895 on the ballpark. Worked the Cobb County Companies, $263 million, or 64.8%, and worked the DBE Companies, $75,000, or 18.5%. And it's continued, we continue to work with security staff and our police in informing that and getting ready for the game day first pitch. So that'll be a continuing effort to work with the Braves Security and a private company to make sure that we are ready for that. So to ensure that our visitors are safe when they visit the ballpark. With that, Mr. Chairman, that is a quick update, and a lot of our future presentations will feature a lot on the interior of the building.
Perfect. Thank you. Any questions or comments with the County Manager? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This takes us to Tab Six, our first public comment. Counselor?
First speaker is Chris Smith, if you'd come forward.
It's not realistic to expect Cobb County to grow...
Excuse me, ma'am, I'm going to need your name for the record, please.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Good evening. Chris Smith.
Thank you.
It is not realistic to expect Cobb County to grow with the same amount of resources, limiting the resources such as cutting library hours, reducing hours at the recreation centers, and cutting staff, in addition, bus services on Sunday. As a constituent in Cobb County, I personally take issue with cutting library hours, reducing hours in the recreation centers, because I can clearly see how resources impact the youth in our community, and it wasn't a consideration. However, after telling constituents in your county, we do not have, we have to do this because we don't have money. Really? Really? The county have money to improve the roads around Cobb County to get ready for the Braves, and it wasn't done for the citizens of the community who had to drive on the roads, needing improvement, and stuck in traffic for years. The Braves is coming. The money the county told us they didn't have, now all of a sudden, they have it, just not for the needs of the constituents in the county. Most parents work outside of the home with typical shift hours of 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And because of this, most citizens go to the library on weekends because it's more feasible or after work hours. During summer months, youth have to put, have projects or reading assignments they could do or work on, and I understand why was it, I don't understand why it wasn't acceptable to close libraries on Sundays in the first place. The recreation center is an instrumental part of most communities, and have proven to be a safe haven for the youth in other communities, in particular, at-risk youth. Friday and Saturday evenings, weekends, the recreation center could have an open-door court on the weekend until at least perhaps 11:00 p.m. Outdoor basketball court could be another consideration. Hiring more code enforcement officers. I've been dealing with code enforcement for over five years, trying to get improvement in my community and my neighborhood, and I was told you had seven code enforcement officers to service this whole county. Yet, we're getting new homes, existing homes. How do you expect the same amount of code enforcement officers to improve the quality of life? At what point do you hire at least one? I am asking you to restore extended hours, bring back Sundays at our local library. Funding for the library shouldn't have been taken away in the first place, only to be replaced by the Braves Stadium. After the game is over at the Braves Stadium off of Cobb Parkway, citizens of our county and other areas of the county want money and resources in their community, in particular, District Four. I would say, be selfish, Powder Springs, but I go ahead and say it anyway, because I just did. Expect to see money in our community when the money start coming in from the Braves Stadium. At the end of the day, all of Cobb County should get resources. All of Cobb County should look beautiful, the quality of life, and it's totally unacceptable to continue to think that you're going to have the A rating that you have. You build so many communities that people can't even afford, right? It's just not right. And that Braves Stadium is a total sore, because you know what? Some people probably can't even afford to get to those games. But yet, they take those same roads to get home, go to work. But that tells me that money existed in the first place, because that slide that was just shown for the Braves, that's a lot of money, a lot, that could have saved the Sunday bus service, could have saved some of the library hours, could have put additional staff in the recreation centers, that could have put a safe haven in some of these communities that had at-risk kids. Has it ever been a consideration, in at least some of these rec centers, to have a room, especially at the Powder Springs Recreation Center, Ron Anderson Community Center, because it's a feeder from TAP. When they walk across the walkway to go to the rec center, why can't there be a room that have at least two computers?
Thank you, ma'am.
So they could do their computer, their homework.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Cynthia Patterson.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Cynthia Patterson, and I live in District Two. This chilling table was printed on the front page of the August 14th Marietta Daily Journal as part of an article titled "On the Table or Off the Market." Eight potential parks are crossed off with a red line. Those 397 acres of prime properties were developed, flattened, and paved over. What a loss for all of us. If the Commissioners had purchased these properties in 2009, when the Citizens Advisory Committee submitted the list, these parks would have been ours to enjoy with family and friends. Instead, the Commissioners ignored the list and have not purchased one acre of parkland since 2008. Especially heartbreaking is East-West Connector at Fontaine Road in Smyrna. Treasures on this 64-acre property included a pond, streams, wetlands, and mature trees. The Commissioners could have purchased this prime land. The owner finally lost patience, and the land was developed. Now it is Cooper Lake at Fontaine, an upscale subdivision of several dozen homes. Homes with exclusive access to Cooper Lake and Cooper Lake Creek. Precious water features that should have belonged to all Cobb residents. Precious water features that should have belonged to all Cobb residents. If the Commissioners had acted sooner, the land could have been ours and our children's, preserved as green space. Sixty-four additional acres within one mile of Heritage Park, an existing county park along Nikajack Creek. What a legacy this sixty-four acres could have been for residents of Cobb County and Mabelton and Smyrna neighborhoods. Green space with a lake and stream. Another park with access to the Silver Comet Trail. Instead, we have a bare, paved subdivision. Trees cut down and topsoil scraped away. New houses add to the county tax base. But protected green space has value too and makes Cobb a desirable place to live. Several weeks ago, Commissioner Ott called for a new forty million dollar green space referendum. The earliest it could be on the ballot is March 2017. Seven months from now. How many more properties will we lose due to this stalling tactic? Commissioner Ott states, and I quote, "Let's just do it again. Let the people decide. My guess is they're going to say yes." End of quote. We don't need to do it again. Sixty-seven percent of voters already said yes in 2008. Thank you.
The next speaker is Norm Fag. Norm Fag.
Good evening, Commissioners. Uh, my name's Norm Fag and I live in East Cobb. Um, I'm just gonna add a little bit to what Cynthia said. Um, sixty-seven percent of the voters of Cobb County voted for the 2008 park bond referendum. Basically, the county promised that forty million dollars worth of parkland would be purchased. It never happened. Um, I'm very heartened actually by some of the comments that I read from Commissioner Burrell indicating that she is in favor of issuing what's left of the park bond immediately, uh, whatever is left of it and immediately begin to purchase some parkland. Uh, and in addition, trying to supplement that up to the forty million dollars uh, in the 2017 budget, which might be, uh, a way to, to, uh, to go. Um, but we have a lot of problems. We have, as, as Cynthia pointed out, the properties are disappearing and the price of land is going up. Um, the land use plan calls for ten and a half percent of the county to be green space. Uh, in order to do that, I believe we need to purchase about eight thousand acres. Okay? Um, that's like five hundred acres over the next sixteen years per year. Okay? Um, and we fully expect forty million dollars worth of parkland uh, at the end of the process. And I think, uh, I, I would strongly encourage you to go ahead and issue the bond for whatever payment schedule is left in it. I've been told various amounts, nineteen million, fifteen million, whatever. I think, uh, I think it's a very good idea to just go ahead and do it, get the ball rolling, because some of these property owners are going to sell. They are not going to wait forever and ever. They've been waiting eight years. Some of them have, have expressed a desire. Um, I can think of several, uh, property owners that I've talked to, uh, including, uh, the owners of the goat farm on Baker Road up near Kennesaw and, um, the Phillips property on Ebenezer Road. Uh, and of course, there's always the famous trip property on Roswell Road. Uh, but these properties are not gonna be available forever. Another thing, in a, in a recent meeting, uh, it was requested that the Commissioners give an update in this meeting, uh, on, on the process. Uh, much like the Braves Stadium process is, is getting an update. Uh, we kinda like to see an update on the acquisition process for the parkland. Wouldn't take but a couple of seconds. Okay? And I would, I would certainly, once again, like to reinforce what Cynthia Patterson said uh, about the urgency of starting this action. Uh, because the longer we wait, uh, the more difficult it's going to become. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
The last speaker is Pax Riddle. Pax Riddle.
Uh, Pax Riddle, uh, proud constituent of Commissioner Cupid. Um, just a quick thing tonight. I, I recently attended a very good presentation, uh, by one of, uh, our county staff members uh, on the comprehensive plan, uh, 2040, uh, which was really super. And it reminds us all of, of how, uh, terrific, uh, of a staff and leadership we, we do have in Cobb County, um, in putting that document together. And so well thought out and that now a lot of us know why Cobb is looked at as, as sort of a leader, uh, in the state as far as how we do things in the county. Uh, what I wanted to ask for that's missing, I've been to a, a number of meetings, uh, in South Cobb where we've talked for hours and hours uh, about the lack of affordable or equitable housing, uh, here in the county. Um, the problem that I come out of with those meetings is that we really don't have the data we need. So I had asked, uh, and I'm sorry, I forget the man who presented that comprehensive plan. I think he's a head of planning or, um, but, uh, we asked him at that meeting and he really couldn't respond. Uh, but it would be great if part of that comprehensive plan, if we had here in the county, uh, one central location where we can find out where are we at, uh, in terms of housing here in the county? What, what do we have? What are we missing? Um, and, and, and where can, uh, working, uh, lower income working families find housing? Uh, what, what, when is that available? Where is it available? Uh, for example, I heard that there are certain developers of some of the new big apartment buildings going on in the Cumberland area, um, who do have a certain amount of set aside apartments for ability to pay constituents because they're using some federal monies? You know, I don't know. I'm, I'm speaking here as to what I think I heard. Um, and that was great information, uh, but the, most of us don't know anything about that. You know, where does it really exist? Is it really true? Is, are some of these units available to people based upon ability to pay? So, uh, make a long story short, it, it would be great if, if, um, you guys could be the, the, uh, information source in, in gathering the data as to where we are in housing and, uh, so that we know exactly what we have, what we don't have. And, uh, and then we can go and address it from that point. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. That'll take us to our consent agenda under tab seven. Commissioners, I'll bring forward a motion to approve the consent agenda as revised and authorize execution of necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel. Is there a second? Is there any comments? Call a question. The motion carries five zero. Our next tab is tab eight, Transportation. Director Wilgus. Seven items.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. County Manager. Yes, our first item is to approve a contract with Construction Engineering and Management Company, LLC for Castile Road Sidewalk, project number E 7200, CCDOT contract number 000971. Castile Road Sidewalk is an approved project in the sidewalks component of the 2011 Transportation Improvements Program. The low bid of seven hundred and thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and six dollars and eleven cents from Construction Engineering and Management Company, LLC, was reviewed and found to be reasonable and responsive. Bid tabulation consisted of seven hundred one thousand, seven hundred and six dollars and eleven cents in roadway cost and thirty-two thousand, one hundred in water system cost. The completion date for this project is a hundred and eighty consecutive calendar days from issuance of the notice to proceed. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Construction Engineering and Management Company, LLC in an amount not to exceed seven hundred and thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and six dollars and eleven cents for Castile Road Sidewalk, project number E 7200, CCDOT contract number 000971. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you. Mr. Weatherford.
Move to approve his presentation, sir.
Any other comments? Call the question. Motion carries five zero. Item two, please.
This item is to approve a contract with WE Contracting Company, Inc. for drainage system repairs on Lost Mountain Court, project number X 2216, CCDOT contract number 001032. Drainage system improvements is an approved component in the 2016 SPOLOST Transportation Improvement Program. The low bid of ninety-two thousand, fifteen dollars from WE Contracting Company, Inc. was reviewed and found to be reasonable and responsive. The completion date for this project is forty-five calendar days from the note, issuance of the notice to proceed. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with WE Contracting Company, Inc. in an amount not to exceed ninety-two thousand, fifteen dollars for drainage system repairs on Lost Mountain Court, project number X 2216, CCDOT contract number 001032. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Mr. Weatherford.
Move to approve, sir, as presented.
Any comments? Call the question. Motion carries five zero. Item three, please.
This item is to approve a contract with Glosson Enterprises, LLC for 2016 Countywide Americans with Disabilities Act compliant sidewalks, project number X 2781, CCDOT contract number 001031. Sidewalks is an approved component in the 2016 SPOLOST Transportation Improvement Program. The low quote of two hundred and forty-one thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars from Glosson Enterprises, LLC was reviewed and found to be reasonable and responsive. The completion date for this project is December 16th, 2016. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Glosson Enterprises, LLC in an amount not to exceed two hundred and forty-one thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars for 2016 Countywide Area Americans with Disabilities Act compliant sidewalks, project number X 2781, CCDOT contract number 001031. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you. Commissioners, I'll bring this forward in the form of a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments? Call the question. Motion carries five zero. Next item, please.
This item is to approve supplemental agreement number three to the resurfacing contract 2016 dash one Countywide Major Thoroughfares Local Maintenance and Improvement Grant with Baldwin Paving Company, Inc. for Anderson Farm Road at Flint Hill Road, project number X 2323, CCDOT contract number 000939. Anderson Road at Flint Hill is an approved intersection improvements project in the 2016 SPOLOST tip. We request the Board of Commissioners approve supplemental agreement number three to the resurfacing contract 2016 dash one Countywide Major Thoroughfares Local Maintenance and Improvement Grant with Baldwin Paving Company, Inc. in an amount not to exceed a hundred and forty-seven thousand, sixty-nine dollars and thirty cents for Anderson Farm Road at Flint Hill Road, project number X 2323, CCDOT contract number 000939. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you. Commissioner Cupid.
Yes, thank you. I would like to thank staff for all of their effort in, um, getting this on the agenda. I know it took some work with Colonial Pipeline. And also want to share with the residents in this area that although this is supported by Venture Homes, which has a development there, that it does address some of the safety concerns with respect to how, um, this intersection is laid out. So, um, we should see some significant improvement with this project. That I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Any comments? Call the question. Motion carries five zero. Next item, please.
This item is to ratify previous action by the county manager authorizing emergency repairs associated with a sinkhole located on Wendy Hill Road and, uh, approve supplemental agreement number one to the contract with CW Matthews Contracting Company, Inc. for said repairs, State PI number 0012774, Cobb County Project Number E 4100, CCDOT contract number 000843. I-75 at Wendy Hill Road, diverging diamond interchange is an approved project in thoroughfare improvements component of the 2011 SPOLOST Transportation Improvement Plan. The project is designated as State PI number 0012774. During construction and following a recent storm event, a sinkhole has developed on the shoulder of the recently completed Leland Drive and driveway entrance to the Belmont Place Apartments. Following extensive investigation, it was determined that the, uh, an existing fifty-four inch corrugated metal pipe that is approximately fifty feet deep has failed. We request the Board of Commissioners ratify previous action by the county manager, authorize emergency repairs associated with a sinkhole on Wendy Hill Road, approve supplemental agreement number one to the I-75 at Wendy Hill Road, diverging diamond interchange contract with CW Matthews Contracting Company, Inc. in an amount not to exceed eight hundred and eleven thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars and seventy-seven cents for said repairs, State PI number 0012774, Cobb County Project Number E 4100, CCDOT contract number 000843. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Mr. Wright.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I know a lot of folks might be wondering about how big a sinkhole is. It's, it's pretty big and it's really deep. So that's why it's so expensive. Um, anyway, make a motion to approve.
Any comments? Call the question. Motion carries five zero.
Item six is to approve the most three qualified firms for engineering design services of Old Highway Forty-One, Old Forty-One Highway Bridge over CSX Railroad, project number X 2116. Old Highway Forty-One, Old Forty-One Highway Bridge over CSX Railroad is an approved bridge replacement project in the 2016 SPOLOST Transportation Improvement Program. This is a joint project with the city of Marietta. We request the Board of Commissioners approve the recommended ranking of the three most qualified firms for engineering design services of Old Forty-One Highway Bridge over CSX Railroad, project number X 2116, and authorize negotiations for final scope of services and fees beginning with the top-ranked firm, AECom Technical Services, Inc., utilizing selection process one competitive negotiations.
Mr. Wright.
Thank you. Uh, definitely a much-needed replacement in our bridge replacement SPOLOST project. Motion to approve.
Jip, let me, um, remind me, are they gonna be holding up a temporary bridge where they replace the one over CSX? Or is that gonna be a length?
That's gonna be part of the design. There's, there's two or three different concepts. One is they would put a parallel bridge. Um, and, and then, once it's done, route the traffic onto that. So they're looking at two or three different options.
It's a heavily traveled road.
It is.
Call the question. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Next item, please.
Our last item is to approve the three most qualified firms for engineering design services of McCollum Parkway at Ben King Road, project number X 2309. McCollum Parkway at Ben King Road is an approved intersection improvements project in the 2016 SPOLOST Transportation Improvement Program. This is a joint project with the city of Kennesaw. We request the Board of Commissioners approve the recommended ranking of the three most qualified firms for engineering design services of McCollum Parkway at Ben King Road, project number X 2309, and authorize negotiations for final scope of services and fees beginning with the top-ranked firm, Gresham Smith &amp; Partners, utilizing selection process one competitive negotiations.
Thank you, Commissioner Weatherford.
Excuse me. Motion to approve is presented, sir.
Second.
Call the question. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, sir.
I didn't mean to wake you up. Sorry. Tab nine, Support Services. Sharon.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, um, County Manager. My name is Sharon Stanley. I'm Director, Information Services Department. I have with me this evening, Mr. Cassie Maslum, um, Maslum, the Deputy Director of the Emergency Management Agency. We will be presenting a recommendation on the development of a business continuity plan for Cobb County government. The business continuity plan is, is an eligible capital project under the 2016 SPOLOST. Business Technology Transformation is an approved project of the Support Services Technology Improvements Work Program. Ms. Maslum will be presenting this item, which comes as a joint recommendation from the Emergency Management Agency and the Information Services Department.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Hankerson.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Hankerson. On December 8th, 2015, the Board of Commissioners authorized advertisement for a public hearing and issuance of an RFP for development of a business continuity plan for Cobb County Government. A public hearing was conducted on January 12th, 2016, and proposals were received for an RFP on April 28th, 2016. An evaluation committee made up of members from EMA, Senior Services, Water System, and Information Services reviewed the proposals and selected Bold Planning Incorporated as the top-ranked proposer. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Bold Planning Incorporated in amount not to exceed $250,400 to develop a business continuity plan software application for Cobb County Government. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Ms. Schratt, go ahead and take this one.
I know it's exciting, but it's not that exciting.
I was trying to figure out why there's dueling presenters. I just.
It's not dueling presenters, it's a joint item.
Okay, that's right. All right. Um, I know it's a long time coming, and I appreciate both of you working hard to get this one moving forward. So make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments? Call the question. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, ladies. Item two. John, do you have a partner president or?
No, sir. Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. Our item deals with the 2016 SPOLOST, and this is the first phase of the overall magistrate court project. During the demolition of the first phase, some unanticipated mastic was exposed, and this was found to be asbestos. Funding for this removal is available in the project budget, and the department recommends that the Board of Commissioners approve supplemental agreement number two to the contract with John Spratlin &amp; Son in the amount of $96,657 for remediation of the 2016 SPOLOST 10 East Park Square renovation project. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
I'll bring this forward in form of a motion. Any comments? Call the question. Motion carries five zero. I didn't see Judge Holmes. Where's the judge? Judge, thanks for being here. This is a good, good, I didn't know there was asbestos over there, so.
Good rats.
Tab 10.
Good evening, Chairman, Board of Commissioners, County Manager. Coming to ask to authorize the advertisement and solicitation of an invitation to bid for a security fence system to be installed around Police Precinct Two, Fire Station Number 22. On February 23rd, 2016, the Board of Commissioners authorized the increase of 2011 SPOLOST budgets for departments based upon excess collection of revenue above projected amounts. Public safety was allocated $309,300 for interior and exterior renovations, and we've identified this project as one that's been done. During the past six years, there have been over 16 incidents involving damage theft and dangerous interactions in the parking lot at this facility with damage to privately-owned vehicles as well as county-owned marked and unmarked police cars. Therefore, we'd like to install a chain-linked fence around the backside of the property with decorative fence in front that will provide limited access to the facility in the parking lot. Therefore, I'm asking Board of Commissioners to authorize the advertisement and solicitation of an invitation to bid from interested parties for the installation of a perimeter fence at Precinct Two, Fire Station Number 22, located at 4700 off Stell Road.
Ms. Weatherford.
Motion approved as presented, sir.
Second.
Any comments? Call the question. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, sir. Tab 11 is our second public comment. Tab 12 is appointments. There's Commissioners, there's two items. The first is to the Board of Commissioners approve the appointment of Icky Mabry to the Region One Department of Behavioral Health and Development Disabilities Planning Board to fill a vacant post for the three-year term to expire on August 31st, 2019. That's a motion. Is there a second? Any comments? Call the question. Motion, excuse me, five zero. Agenda item two is of similar nature. It is for the Board of Commissioners announcing appointments to Terron Moore, Greer Gallagher, and to the Workforce Development Board for a three-year term to expire on August 30th, 2019. That is the form of a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other comments? Call the question. Motion carries five zero. That takes us to tab 13, Commissioners' Public Address. Ms. Schratt.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. First one I have is, as everyone knows, this past Friday was opening night for most of the Cobb County High School football teams. Just want to congratulate Wheeler High School Wildcats on their big win, 35 to 19 over the Marietta Blue Devils. See, we got a fan back there. Also, coming up on September 17th at 10 o'clock is the East Cobber Parade. Those that live out there know that lots of candy to be given out. And also tonight, just as part of the county's effort to take a look at the police and how we might be able to do things better and highlight the things that we do well, the International Association of Chief Police are over at Mount Bethel, listening to what the community has to say, and we are definitely interested in your comments, so if you want to provide that feedback. Also, on September 2nd, a TV show resumes with an interview with Mike Plant, President of Development for the Atlanta Braves, and a tour of the stadium. Lot more pictures and video like the county manager showed tonight. Also, beginning on September 6th, the Department of Public Safety staff will start its fall session of the Citizens Public Safety Academy. It's a 14-week program. If you're interested, applications are due this Friday, and you can call Mallory Wheat at 770-590-5650. And the last thing I have, in my continuing effort to highlight the things that our public safety does that's above and beyond, on Monday, August 8th, at approximately 5:00 in the afternoon, Cobb County Police Special Victims Unit received a phone call from Precinct Three Officers Weinstein and Officer Buckman, who had responded to a local hotel in reference to a lady and her daughter in financial distress. The lady advised that she had moved to the Atlanta area for a new job and had been living in temporary housing until, basically, she had run out of money. However, due to her financial situation, she didn't have any money to continue living there and didn't have any way to get to someplace to be taken care of. The two officers took the initiative to be problem solvers. They worked with the hotel staff to find a place for the lady and her child to spend the night at a local homeless shelter, and then they realized that the lady and their child, her child, had not eaten and took them to the local Chick-fil-A where they ordered and paid for their dinner. After they finished eating, Officer Weinstein and Buckman arranged for Uber to transport them to shelter in Atlanta, which they also paid for out of their own pockets. Furthermore, Officer Weinstein was able to secure more permanent living arrangement for them at the Atlanta Women's Shelter going forward if the lady needs to take advantage of that. I wrote about that in my Friday newsletter and received comment from a resident in Vinings who is organizing her community to help the lady and her daughter who are in distress. So a big shout out to Officer Weinstein and Buckman for the great effort. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Cupid.
I'd like to yield a few minutes of my time, if you can indulge me, to see if Eddie Cannon can respond to a request to get a very brief update regarding where we are with the parks bond, and then I'll just share some comments. Sorry to put you on the spot.
Oh, that's okay. I'm fine. I'm fine. So the committee is hard at work. The last four weekends, we've been out looking at properties and evaluating properties that had been nominated. We're fixing to wrap that up. Then we'll go into the process where we'll be evaluating what we saw and creating a list to present to y'all. We, our goal is to definitely reach, meet our deadline of October work session. We hope to be done a little earlier than that, and if we are, we'll let you know in the next few weeks. But we've made a lot of progress, and the committees worked really hard. They spent a lot of weekends, Fridays and Saturdays of their time, all day long, going to look at properties. So we looked at a lot of great pieces, and we'll have a great list for y'all when it's, when we, when we get it completed. Questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Really appreciate that. Just wanted to share with those who've been diligently coming out here to advocate for the purchase of the green space, is that part of our delay or lack of comment has been to consider how the funding can be aligned with our budget conversation for the 2016-2017 budget, which was just presented today. And there'll be opportunity for public comment with respect to it, and over the next few weeks, we'll be given some options as to how we can fund it. I know that, you know, in looking back over you being here for several meetings, this is something that, if it was not communicated, I could have communicated or someone could have, and I apologize for that because I think what you've just been looking for is just what information on the path forward. But just want you to know that the time is coming for us to really seriously consider this and would encourage, want you to be encouraged that I think most of the commissioners are supportive of this moving forward, we're just trying to figure out how to do it. That brings my next comments. Towards the budget, we are in consideration of the 2016-2017 budget, which was presented today. I have shared via my newsletter and also today the request that I have that reflect constituents' requests in the district and across the county, and hope will be given some serious consideration by our commissioners. Some of these requests are based on, some of these requests are based on ongoing need, but I'm very concerned that if we do keep our millage rate as is, it will only accommodate current service levels, meaning anything new, even inclusive of the parks budget, would result in a millage increase. And this is something that I don't know how palatable is for the Cobb County general public. It's frustrating to be in this position right now because I think that we've had a lot of opportunity to consider Cobb County's growth with all of the increases that have come and some with respect to the stadium, to sit here and say, once again, we are going to be limited in options because of this new millage rate that has been set. But I think that we can change our approach and still be reflect, and still adopt a millage that's reflective of Cobb County moving forward, not just looking backwards, but it may take us changing the millage in light of all the other funding options that have been presented. So I just want you to be mindful of that. I don't want anybody to be shocked about some of the conversations that we're going to have, to consider some of the tough requests that you have to improve service levels and programming throughout the county. Those are all my comments for tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Schratt.
Thank you, Commissioner Cupid, for doing that. I'd first like to thank and congratulate our Mandate Class 41 that graduated this past Friday. Three of us were there to welcome them into the Cobb family and also thank them and their families for the sacrifice that they make every day and will continue to make to ensure the safety of our community. We appreciate you and we value you. Through the end of this month, you can take home your new best friend at the Cobb County Animal Shelter for only $10 dogs and cats adoptions through the end of August. We have plenty to choose from, so go take a peek. Also, on September 13th, in this room, from 5:00 to 7:00, we are going, I'm hosting with Community Development, a zoning one-on-one class. A couple of years ago, we had one hosted by Commissioner Cupid in District Four, so we're doing another one this year from 5:00 to 7:00 on Thursday, on Tuesday, I'm sorry, September 13th in this room. So please come out. It is free, but you do need to register just so we'll, we'll know, have a head count of, make sure we have enough space. And coming up in October, October 22nd, from 10:00 to 2:00 p.m. at the Cobb County Superstation, Precinct One, Cobb Parkway, Keep Cobb Beautiful is sponsoring Medical Medication Disposal Day, Saturday, October 22nd, 10:00 to 2:00 p.m. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Good morning. Ms. Weatherford.
I'm gonna wait now. Thank you. I wanted to reiterate and our thanks and gratulations to the Cobb County Police and Floras for what they did this year for the eighth consecutive time, as well as the Keacher and Track and Phil team. And I thought it was very good that we got a presentation for Cobb Community Impact Grants and what a amount of money that we gave expanded to 103,000 people. So I think that's well worth our small investment in our community, and it was a great, great thing. Along the lines of public safety, there is, just for you, may or may not know, the state law that's been in effect for many years about moving over public safety on the side of the roads has now been expanded to utility crews. So if you see a utility crew working on the side of the road, state law now requires to do that. And on a personal note, I am leaving this week for a two-week trip, and I haven't done that in many years, and many of you might know I'm a motorcycle enthusiast, so a friend of mine are riding to Montana on our motorcycle. So wish us luck and I hope to be back after Labor Day or not. We really know. You may or may not know that I'm a member of a notorious motorcycle gang as well called the Sons of Arthritis. And we're, my friend and I are in the ibuprofen chapter, so we hope that we will have a safe journey and hopefully the cell phones do not work out there. So, thank you.
Ms. Schratt, I hope you have a great, safe trip. Look out for the other guy. I just got a couple of things I wanted to, to comment to you. This past week, there was another Veterans Treatment Court graduate class that Judge Green has began, and it's just absolutely phenomenal that we're able to, as Cobb County citizens in the courts, are able to provide an opportunity for the men and women who served our interests as defenders of our country, who for one reason or another came into a problem mentally or that created an issue for them to get crosswise with the law. And this Veterans Court is enabling those folks to get a hold of their life and stand up again and, and I'm very proud of everyone that's helped and been a part of that and grateful for that, that court. Also wanted to just reiterate a little bit of what Commissioner Cupid talked about with the budget. We did present that budget today. There will be a public hearing Tuesday, September 13th at 9:00 a.m. on that budget. The board has also decided to have a second public hearing on that budget, September 27th at 7:00 p.m. here in the Board of Commissioners with the intent to approve a final budget that evening as well. The budget presentation, as I mentioned earlier, will be available on our website, both in printed form and video presentation, and our staff stands ready to answer any questions you might have as to what is in it and what is not in it. I did want to comment that the 2017 budget is being prepared to move forward, basically with the input of the district commissioners. As all of you know, that next year, when the time gets set to set the millage based on where the digest comes in, I won't be a part of that team. There'll be another person sitting here, and I just felt it was not the right thing to do for me to set forward at an expanding level that was going to have to be accommodated by someone else in a leadership position as chairman of our board. So the lead will be taken by our district commissioners as to what happens to that board, what happens to that budget. I did present a balanced budget, which is essentially a continuation budget from the 2016 budget, moves forward with the assumption of the same millage rate. It takes into account the increase in the digest anticipated with those expenses that were incurred in 2015 and have to be, or 2016, it must be carried over into 2017, and it is a balanced budget. The millage has not been set for 2017. That is up to this board, when they set their budget together, what they anticipate their expenditures to be, is to where they want to see the millage projected going forward. That's up to this district commissioners to set forth where they want to go with that issue. Also wanted to tell you that one of my leadership Cobb class members' husbands and his leadership Cobb class member are heading down to Louisiana this Saturday, taking as many supplies as they possibly can to support the folks. as many supplies as they possibly can to support the folks there that are suffering from the flooding. It is primarily personal equipment, or personal items, cleaning items, and things to sustain folks while they try to rebuild where the water secedes. If you contact my office tomorrow, and actually, which we should try to do, Ms. Kelly, if you're still here, is get the list of items up on our website, my front page, web page, so people can go to there. And if you're interested in donating, we can give you the addresses to who to contact to get that to them by Saturday, so they can take it down there with them, if you're interested in supporting their folks. We lived through a flood. How long ago was that? We lived through that flood in South Cobb? Oh, nine. So we know firsthand the effect of a flood has on a community, and as such, whatever we can do as a community to help those folks down in Louisiana, I think we ought to do whatever we need to do to get that done. So check our website tomorrow afternoon. We'll have a list up and where to take that information and those materials, too. And we'll help the community, help leadership Cobb class get through, get another great example of what Cobb County stands for. Mr. County Manager, anything else we need to consider tonight? We are adjourned.